Maybe even more. This does not even cover our uh cleaning costs. For uh the the for the guy to come in over here and cleans. It doesn't include any uh uh other costs. Of course, we're not we're not having port here now. But there's been times when people jam stuff down the toilets. We have our electric, our air conditioning heating. We have the wear and tear on the building. And Wayman Township's just walking away with uh paying forty eight hundred dollars and then they get a portion of that money back. How is that fair to S T O M A? What part of that again don't I get?
So so what are you suggesting?
I think that I think that that no, we can't dissolve it because that needs a one year. Uh notice, but what I'm saying is I think there needs to be a revision to the contract that we have with Wayman Township. This is wrong. This is way wrong. It never should have uh been like this. I would have never negotiated anything like that for our town. Never.
Well, I haven't seen the I haven't I have not seen the shared services agreement. I don't know when it's set to expire. Do you, Mayor?
I do not know that. Mister uh Moore, would you send out the next time that you're in this building, be absolutely certain that you have a uh. You email copy that court contract over to Randy's office? And I think that this needs to be revisited because very frankly, we are getting a horrible uh shakeout of our dollar for this one. This is just not right.
Well, then isn't your option to terminate the agreement?
I I think we need to have one year. Uh let's just put it this way, Randy, okay? With all due respect, huh, we're still at least making three thousand dollars. And then if we terminate them, then that's three thousand dollars less that we're going to receive. Okay, but the reality is they're not giving us enough money.
If this is gonna be an issue of contract negotiations, it really should be an executive session.
We'll discuss it in further because we're gonna be going into a closed session anyway to discuss a contract matter. Okay, so.
Hold on a motion that we go to uh.
Hold on, we have something else here.
Public comments in five minutes.
Hold on, we have something else here. We have uh landfill discussion. Who asked to put that on there and what is this about?
I did. It's the end of the year. We had a very important meeting with Pine Lands right before covid. We made promises to them about things we would do because they found us to be in noncompliance pretty seriously. And as far as I know, we've done nothing. It's year end. This is the last council meeting of the year. What have we done about it? What are we gonna do about it? How much trouble are we in?
With the landfill?
Yeah.
We're in no trouble. As a matter of fact, we kinda came to a little bit of a screeching halt. The last thing that happened was, as you maybe. I sent an email over to uh Stockton College to uh Harvey Kesselman, the president. And he was gonna turn that over to the environmental science uh uh group over there and they never got back to me. Funny that you asked to have this on the agenda. Funny, because I'll tell you what. I just had a a conversation with another mayor from another county. And we were talking about our landfills and he has recommended. Uh a couple months back and then we had a conference call just a couple days ago. There is an entity. A serious entity that is willing to take over any associated costs that are remaining left. For the finalization of the closeout of our landfill to be presented to the Pine Lands. In return, what they're looking to do is they're gonna then proceed to put solar panels on our landfill. And what they wanna do then is they wanna enter into a contract to lease our property so that they can uh sell the electric. Now, this is very, very premature. This is the beginning stage of it, but nonetheless, when the time gets to the point where. They know what they wanna do, I'm gonna have to make a presentation to the governing body. But right now, I think that let's just sit tight and proceed with what we're doing, with what I'm doing with the uh landfill. Um and we'll see what's gonna be the best thing for us to matter. To the best of my knowledge, I'm not aware that the Pine Lands has given us any co- uh correspondence that tells us that we're in uh neglect. I'm not aware of that. And if you are.
Uh I'm I'm glad to hear though, it it's a place of beautiful inform us of all that you've been doing. I've I had no idea of any of that and I'm supposed to be the other half of the landfill committee. Thank you for your report.
I'm I'm very, very excited to think that we are getting very, very close and if we have an entity. That's willing to take on somewheres between, God only knows if it could be eighty thousand dollars. Uh we had that other company there, L R S, it said it was no losses. What was it Nelson? Hundred twenty three thousand dollars, a hundred twenty eight thousand? For the finalization, which I thought was it was a ridiculous amount of money with what they were saying. But no matter what the figure's gonna be, if this guy's gonna take on the cost by himself. And absorb that as part of his uh uh putting on solar panels. And broker that into a contract with the municipality to to lease our space from us, that's a win-win situation. We can't lose on that.
Yeah, but that's that what you just said is is not in keeping with what Pine Lands presented at the meeting. It wasn't a hundred twenty five thousand dollars for finalization, it was a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars to. Come into compliance on the last ten years of noncompliance and maybe start the clock over again on the landfill closure. There's a lot that has to be done there.
Well, this company here, they're gonna what they're gonna do is they're gonna ask and and Mister uh Moore. When they when they put in the Oprah request, give them all the information instantly, but they're gonna request to see all the correspondence that we have with. What where we are with our landfill right now. They wanna evaluate it and they're gonna make the decision about what they wanna do, but they wanna take on the landfill and finalize the uh whatever. Expenditures are left to be paid for and they're gonna they wanna I think we're currently in phase two, looking to go into phase three. So they wanna see all of the uh associated work of what we've done and I think we should have a landfill file. Yep, so you we should be able to easily send that over to them and uh therefore they'll they'll evaluate it and then we'll go from there.
I I thought before the last meeting um be- before your last meeting with the the uh Pine Lands. And the um L L M R, whatever the.
L R S.
Thank you. Um I thought we were like in the home stretch. We had less than a year to do this. It's gonna be coming to the end. I thought we were we were just about done. I I'm not sure I know what you're talking about, about reaching out to Harvey Kesselman, you said, from wha- what's that for?
I reached out to him and Mister Dild is aware that uh what we had recommended with the Pine Lands. I believe the gentleman's name was Edwin Z- Wengrowski. And what we had discussed was that we needed to have some final compilation of numbers, which would be fieldwork that would be conducted. And it was agreed upon that we would contact Stockton College to find out from their environmental science uh 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 group. And that they will put together all of the fieldwork and present it into a uh 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 report. In which then, we never discussed what the price was gonna be. The last that I uh discussed with Mister uh Kesselman was. What kind of grant monies that are out there, so that way there, the college would be able to apply for the grant, do all of the fieldwork and then present it to us as a project. And for some reason, I don't know why, they just never uh followed through it. Of course, it seems like everything's just all a standstill with covid, even with the Pine Lands.
But I thought we we hired that company to do that for us and they had already done that for us.
They took us to point A and we now need to get to point B. Which is the finalization of the compiling of data and some minor additional fieldwork that gets that needs to be done. But Nelson, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that they'd come up with somewhere's around a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars to do. Relatively very little work. And when I saw that, I figured to myself, you know something? I think this has just gone on long enough with them. They've gotten an enormous amount of money from us. I am not exactly sure that we've gotten our best shake for our dollar, but I can tell you that I'm in a of of the opinion. If somebody's gonna take on our landfill and it's not gonna cost us anything, this is this is what we need to do.
Well, Mayor, you opened that statement by saying, correct you if you're wrong. I believe that you're wrong and here's why. In the meeting that you and I were in where we sat down with Mister Brankowski and the gentleman from L R L L M R, L R S, whatever it was. Brankowski made it very clear that we initially had four monitoring wells at the landfill. They made a determination in two thousand seven that four wasn't enough and had us increase it to thirteen monitoring wells because they thought they saw a plume that was moving. For ten years after two thousand seven, L R S or whoever it was. By their own admission, gave us bad data, did bad fieldwork and did not properly track whether the way the plume was moving through those thirteen wells. Therefore, Pine Lands invalidated all of our reporting on the monitoring wells for the ten year period that started two thousand seven and ended two thousand seventeen. They are satisfied with what has happened since two thousand seventeen, but they need a far longer period of time of monitoring that plume. Because it's moving toward wetlands and they wanna know that it's not about to kill some species of whatever. But what I remember Mister Wengrowski saying was that we pretty much have to start over on a lot of this stuff because L R S. Botched it in their in their in gathering data for a ten year period. That's what he said.
That's about that's about right. That's about right.
So why are why is council only hearing about this now?
Because I just had this conversation less than seventy two hours ago.
We had this meeting back in March.
This conversation that I had took, which is tonight with my report, less than forty eight hours ago.
From the Pine Land meeting, why weren't we kept apprised of this situation? Ten years of lost time and starting all over is a big deal. And we've paid them for that ten years of service, even though it's invalid.
I guess that's something that Mister uh Solicitor's gonna have to guide us accordingly as to how we have that remedy corrected that they uh screwed up.
But why are why why didn't we grab that ball and run with it back in March when that meeting was?
Well, Nelson, when did we have that meeting with uh Ed Wengrowski? Wasn't that some?
I think it was February, January, February, but I mean, I don't, Mayor, I'm. We came away from that meeting and you had that brainstorm to talk to Kesselman at Stockton. Actually, it was Wengrowski that suggested go to Rutgers Stockton or another school. I can't remember what the other one was. You asserted that you knew. Kesselman will and and you could you could put together something with him and then covid happened. So my purpose of bringing it up tonight is just where it's the end of the year. We've known of this for ten months. Where do we stand with it and what is our action plan?
In essence, we've lost another year then.
Well.
You're no fault of mine. You're no fault of anybody's.
Can't help covid.
Happened, I mean.
Same covid, we can't deny what the condition is.
We had some bad.
But with emails, we couldn't email in ten months. In ten months, we couldn't email back and forth and come up with a plan.
Seems to me like some people have already have their mind made as to how they wanna uh proceed with this here. I'm trying to be cordial with what we're gonna do. But if you wanna prosecute me, that's fine.
Are you talking about I have no plan? I have no.
What I'm what Mister Dild, what has happened is exactly per from what you said. Covid nineteen happened and then we started getting into the real thick and thin of it. I'm not even exactly sure that the state was shut down when we had that one telephone conference with Eddie Brankowski. And then we had another subsequent uh follow-up conversation. And I remember I was outside working in my yard painting the outside of my house while I was out of work and the weather was nice. And we had a subsequent conversation with Ed Wengrowski. And then that's when we discussed about having Stockton. Uh evaluating it because I had spoken to Mister uh uh Kesselman. I sent him an email and the reality is they never got back. And time has gone by and I mean, it's like, you know, we're running into complication after complication with some of our meetings, even with technology. Listen. It's it's not our fault that covid nineteen happened. It's on several parts in every municipality throughout the entire state. We're not the only ones, but we're we're just, you know. We're gonna try to take care of this here in a professional way and in the right way. Let this company take a look at what we've got. Let them evaluate and they're gonna probably, not probably, I can assure you that they're gonna have to contact the finance committee and see. Where they're headed with this here and I'm sure Mister Wengrowski will guide them accordingly and they're gonna make a conscientious decision about what they wanna do. And if they wanna continue to take on our landfill, we would be idiots not to let that happen.
Why wouldn't we have talked to Mr. Lafferty about this then? Because at this point, he should have known about this. He should have been able to research what what leg we have to stand on with this company because if we've lost ten years. And we've paid them for work that we that we cannot use, we've wasted our money. We've thrown that money out the window.
Wonder are you then? Mister Lafferty, I'm sure you'll probably wanna handle that, correct?
I I have absolutely no knowledge of what you're talking about. I have not been involved in this landfill.
This is a if this is some type of uh uh very casual careless mistake. Of a a professional entity, what are we gonna do? While while we pay them and they've and they've given us negligible reports.
You've gotta give them a chance to look into it.
Yes.
I mean. You gotta give them some data, give them a chance to look into it. At least give them all that we have. Engineering malpractice litigation is as complicated as medical malpractice. It's it's not a simple, it's not that simple.
I make a motion, we open the public, open for public comment.
Second.
Call in favor. All right, any votes? Meeting is now open to the public.
I don't know your name.
Mister Gossen. Mister Gossen.
I'm muted, Mister Gossen.
I mean.
You're muted, Mister Gossen. You're muted. You're muted. Ah, that that would be my address here in S T O M A or Swampwater Down is on Fifth Avenue. I've been talking about that previously. Uh, thank you. Uh it did I understand that we do have a zoning report this month?
I believe we do.
We do. Uh would I be able to get a copy of that at City Hall or how about that?
Well, I think uh maybe the right way is just to submit an Oprah request and we can get that for you.
How? And then I would do that at City Hall or by way of email? I'm not sure what.
You can just you can just email. You can just email at city clerk at S T O M A dot org. I will get the email and we'll find the we'll we'll obtain the report. We have it and we'll get it out to you.
Thank you.
I believe I have a record of of residents asking for information. That's the only reason I'm asking you. If if it wasn't for that, you could just come in and and pick it up.
Not a problem. We've heard over and over again, the limitations based on this by covid. Uh, the uh the the meeting tonight at times got a bit lengthy, I I will say. And 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 at times, it it seemed as though there were. Certain conspiracies that may have been alluded to and. Sometimes when you're talking, it it I I found myself at times. Does anyone else here remember Tim Taylor from Tool Time? When he used to talk to his neighbor over the fence and you only got to see that his eyes from the top of his head up? I I I wonder how frustrating that must have been for Tim Taylor over the years and how frustrating it's been for me this evening. Uh as a- as it relates though to uh. What's going on though with with the landfill? Uh Mister Mayor, I I I've been here for thirty two years. You've been on council. For a good portion of those thirty two years. Uh I I I will say this.
Hello?
I I think we do have to go back. Have I been lost? No, you're there. We got you. I I I think we do have to go back and look at L R S because ten years of bad reports. I don't think can be put up to a a a casual mistake. There seems to be something more to ten years of bad data. Uh, so I I I I I would expect that to as a taxpayer to be looked in on. Uh, thank you.
I will tell you this, Mister Gossen. I I will tell you this. I had just learned about that. The same day that Mister uh Dild learned about it, that we were given ten years of bad data. We never knew anything about that in the past. We just learned of it earlier in the year. I mean, it's it's, you know, I don't I don't do engineering, nor do I do water analysis or fieldwork like that. That's just not my area of expertise.
No, I I'm I'm not, I'm.
That's that's clearly not my, that's sure clearly not what I do for a living. And I try to make the best decisions that I can for the taxpayers' dollar. And we were getting a lot of grant money. My God, we got well over four hundred thousand dollars in grant money. Apparently, they knew how to uh uh manipulate that money and we were led to believe that they were doing a lot of these testings. On our wells, but then we come to find out in the eleventh and a half hour, just as we're getting ready for showtime, that a lot of those testings that were done were done. Inappropriately. Now, how am I supposed to know any of that stuff?
Mayor, I've not. You've been involved for many of those years, but my only point that I would would make is is that. It it wasn't, it doesn't seem to be a casual and careless mistake. If it occurred over a period of ten years. Uh, and and I would expect now that it would be looked in on. Uh, and you mentioned that the grants. I would expect that the people that gave us the grants that then got spent on L R S. Might have some interest in where their money went and if L R S might have, in fact. Done something wrong. The people who gave us the grants. That then ultimately went to L R S might be our ally in finding out and having some recourse.
Well, I can assure you that we will get to the bottom of it. I'm going to ask this company if they're 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 truly interested to take on our landfill. They're gonna evaluate whatever uh information that we have and they're gonna have to contact the Pine Lands to see what's the next step of what we need to do. And then they're in a position to figure out what what they wanna do and if everything seems to be uh in order. Uh, that's gonna work out for the uh best interest of our city and for what they wanna do, then I say, you know, let's just move on.
And ignore everything else that's happened over the ten ten years.
I didn't say anything. I didn't say anything about ignore. They're gonna they're gonna make the determination about what they're gonna do. Mister Lafferty has just indicated. That, you know, engineering malpractice is a uh a very, very difficult thing to try to take on, uh just like medical malpractice. Is that what you said, Mister Lafferty? Correct?
That's cor- that's cor- it's that is correct. It's very complicated and and you really have to. Do an analysis of financial viability and I'm not prepared to talk about it.
No, and and we're not, we're not gonna discuss or or try case that, you know, we're not even uh knowing what we're talking about, so this is not the appropriate form to do it. We will look into the situation, Mister Gossen, as best I can.
That's all I asked for.
Hopefully, we're gonna get the best favorable result that's gonna represent the city's needs. All right?
I brainstorm some thoughts as a citizen.
Thank you.
If I may, the uh the cleaning person in the city must have logged the building, so just keep that in mind. I told you to hold off for right now.
Um, I don't see anyone else with public comment.
Let's go to a German. Mister Pogue uh wants to comment.
Oh, I'm I'm sorry. Their Anne's phone wants to comment.
Let 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 Anne's phone comment first, cuz. I don't think we've heard from them before.
Who wants to comment? Hello. Hi, can you hear me now? Yes.
Yeah, you're my you're my hearing.
Yeah, I don't know if this is the the uh.
Need a name and address, please.
I'm sorry.
Anne Osman, O S M A F.
Oh, yes, from Fourth Avenue?
Fourth Avenue, one seven seven fourth.
Okay, sure.
Sure if this is the right time or place to ask this question, but I dropped off an application for a zoning variance. Uh, last week and uh I'm kinda stuck. I I did uh drop off the application. Uh, which is complete to the best of my knowledge that I can get to thus far with um. Payment, uh, but I am unable to. Uh, satisfy the requirement for the legal notice publication or the letter to surrounding landowners. Because I needed a date to include in that letter as to when the variance would. Uh, there would be a meeting for the variance to be heard and I'm I'm confused as to what I need to do next. Or who might be able to tell me when that date was and.
Okay, fir- fir- first off, for the uh notices that you need to send out to the public. Uh, you need to send out a notice to anybody that's within two hundred feet of your property. Uh, that stuff, one, that's on both sides of you, that's behind you, which is not the case, you know, well, yeah, that is the case, whoever two hundred foot behind you. And two hundred feet from across the street from you. So you can get all that information from the tax office.
I did have. I do have that, thank you.
Did they get, okay.
I do have that.
There's a check, there's a checklist that you should be able to receive from the uh 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 from the zoning officer for um. Whatever you need to do for the requirements and then you just complete that check off list.
I do. I I've completed that and I have dropped off the application, but in order to put the. Legal notice out and to send that letter out, I need to have a date because the form letter that's included that I put my information in. Says that a meeting will be held on thus and such date.
Talk to Richard. Mi- mi- Miss Olson, this is uh.
Osman.
Osman, okay. Uh, I'm I'm John Moore. I'm I'm not on Zoom. I'm away from the. Mayor is watching the the iPad, but uh I just wanna say that I did. We did receive your application, it's sitting on the table in 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 our office. And I'm going to call the planning board solicitor to see how we can proceed. We have a meeting on November eighteenth, but yet this is a bit premature that you would be scheduled for that meeting. Because you have to do these notices. Well, I wanna be clear from the solicitor. On how we can advise you as to when to start and when the next meeting. You know, so it ties into a planning board meeting, so you can be part of that. So, uh, I have your uh phone number on the application, should be on there. And as soon as I find out something, which I have to to do this week, uh tomorrow, Friday, I'll give you a call back.
Okay, so you're saying that I should hold off on the letter and the legal notice and you'll get back to me. Uh, within a reasonable amount of time, a week or so, or 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 I I expect, you know, eh eh. A week or two with a date that I would be able to put into those letters.
Yes, because.
Okay.
I'm not so sure how the meetings are gonna go next year. Uh, I don't plan to be part of it, but uh. I'll find out all the details, but I don't wanna see you advertise and then say, okay, you know, we're gonna meet on a certain date when. There's been meetings that have been canceled and all, you know, on the on the planning board side, so I wanna just have it so that it's in sequence. So that there's no bumps in the road for you, cuz I know you've been asked a question. We've been trying to help. So I will, I will call you tr- I'll try to reach out to you Friday.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, great. My second question, again regarding that same application. Uh, I'm I'm sitting here knowing that there has to be a septic uh engineering plan because. Uh, and I won't get into the details, but I know there needs to be a septic engineering proposal in uh in. As part of the project that I'm looking at, do I need to have that proposal with that application? If so, it puts, well, it puts me in a spot here because I'm gonna spend money for the septic engineering. But I'm not sure what's going to happen with the zoning variance, so.
If I can, this is uh, like, yeah, uh, Yosman, let me do it. Osman, let me tell you this. I had a septic design done on my property. Generally, as a rule of thumb, you can get a septic design somewhere's anywhere between two thousand and twenty four hundred dollars.
Right.
That that's about the going rate for a septic design, but that's gonna be a guaranteed requirement that you'll have to have for the planning board. Because you're gonna be seeking to have some type of relief and the engineer's gonna need to know exactly what is the design plan that you're all looking to put in. Uh, for your septic and then, of course, you're gonna need to have the county board of health approval too. So when you get the septic design. The very first thing that you really should do, once your engineer's got it completed for you, is you take it over to the county board of health. And you leave, you're gonna have probably seven copies with you, I presume. And they're gonna stamp and seal each one of those copies, so that way there you give the board one. You're gonna give the uh uh code people uh another copy. You're gonna have one on file here for the city hall. You're gonna keep one for yourself and. You have a couple more to figure out which what you may wanna do with, but you know.
Okay, but my my question though is, uh, the variance doesn't necessarily speak to. The septic. If I don't get the relief that I was asking for. In the variance, then I will have thrown away that money for the septic. If you understand what I'm saying. If the if I can't, if I if if I don't get the zoning relief. Then there's no point to to doing the septic. I will have thrown that money out the window. Uh, so. Would you, would the would the planning board look at the. Application for the variance and say, okay, this looks like it's something that we can work with? Uh, but you need to have, but you need to have a plan before it's approved?
Wait, we have, we have something that's called. We have something that's called a preliminary application review, if that's the exact words for it, but I don't hold me to it, but I think it's somewhere's like fifty dollars or seventy five dollars for the fee. You come before the board, you make a presentation and then you can kinda pretty much read the board, but where where they feel and what they're gonna do. Uh, you find out a lot of things about what you're gonna be required to do or what you cannot be able to do. And they'll probably give you guidance as well. I mean, the board generally never tries to beat anybody up until one of our residents is trying to make an improvement for their property. I am in fact aware of what you're looking to do and I think that that would be a tremendous asset for the neighborhood because you're looking to replace your home that's. Literally right out on the roadway. You wanna set it way back further.
Practically in the road.
Yeah, but you have some, you have a couple little hoops that you have to jump through, which I really don't see your application being a difficult one. It's just some technical formalities that you have to do, but personally speaking, I don't really see any technical difficulties with what you have. I really don't see that. But personally speaking, I don't really see any technical difficulties with what you have. I really don't see that happening.
Okay, I just, you know, because one way or the other, I'm gonna spend septic money. Uh, but I don't wanna have to spend it twice. If I can't do it with the variance, then I'll have to go to plan B or C or D or something like that. And if I've spent the money for septic plants over this direction and I can't do it, I have to spend the money again. That's kinda putting me in a bind. So the preliminary idea sounds.